I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of August tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available online or at the Planning Department, Room two thirteen. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. If you parked in the parking lot across the street to the north, the gate is open and no parking coupons are needed. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, commissioners and the staff, cell phones may not be used in the chamber during any portion of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. The Planning Commission action today is final on the following item, five point one B, Special Permit two-two-zero-two-four. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council or the County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within fourteen days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or County Board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meetings held July thirteenth and July twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Is there a motion for the July thirteenth meeting?
Move to approve the July thirteenth meeting?
Second.
Minutes?
Shelley?
Campbell?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes. Is there a motion for the July twenty-seventh meeting?
I would move to approve the minutes of the July twenty-seventh meeting.
Second. Joy? Shelley?
Campbell?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Minutes approved.
The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Shelley to read all the consent agenda items into the record. Once these items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section Three of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Shelley, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Yes, we just have one item on the consent agenda, one point one, Street and Alley Vacation two-two-zero-zero-six, to vacate the east-west alley from the east line of Shower Street to the west line of Lincoln Street in Block Eight, Cheney, Lancaster County, Nebraska. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on this item?
No.
Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting this site to be disclosed?
No.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this consent agenda item?
Is there anyone here wishing to speak? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
I would move that we approve, uh, Street Alley, Street and Alley Vacation two-two-zero-zero-six.
Second. Corr?
Shelley?
Campbell?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Tracy, can I ask a question of staff, just for education?
I suppose so, yes.
Steve? Steve, with this within a three-mile limit, why does it have to go to the County Board?
Uh, Steve Hendrickson, Planning Department, five-five-five South Tenth Street. Very good question. So this one being outside of the city of Lincoln city limits.
Right.
It is actually owned and maintained by the county.
Okay.
Um, so in these circumstances, you're making a recommendation to both the City Council and the County Board. The City Council ultimately is just making a recommendation to the County Board, and the County Board waits for them to make their recommendation first. Um, and then it is the County Board that will actually take the action of vacating the property since they have, are the owners and maintainers of-
And have jurisdiction.
Yes, right. Once it's annexed, it will go into the city and then it would be up to the City Council if it was annexed first and then vacated.
Yep, thank you. I was just a education-
No, a good question. Even in our own office, we've been working on the procedures on how does this all work out because the County Board process is different than the city.
Right, thank you.
Thanks, Dick. There are no requests for deferral, so we will now proceed to public hearing. The staff will make a brief presentation. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony and the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the Planning Commission members and/or included as part of the record, please provide that information to the clerk for distribution. Each person testifying should state their name and address and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes, then you will have one minute to wrap up your testimony. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Shelley, will you please call the first public hearing item?
Yes, four point one, Change of Zone two-two-zero-two-two from H-three Highway Commercial District to I-one Industrial District on property legally located, or generally, legally generally located at fifteen fifty-five Yolanda Avenue. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on this application?
No.
Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of this site to be disclosed?
No. Yes, Steve, Emma.
Okay, uh, Steve Hendrickson of the Planning Department, five-five-five South Tenth Street. Um, just before we started on this item, we did want to introduce, uh, Emma Martin, who is a new planner in our office. She joined us July first. Uh, Emma is a recent graduate of South Dakota State University and has also recently relocated to Lincoln. So, um, haven't exactly been hiding her for the last month, but, uh, there's an awful lot to learn before you kind of get thrown into things. And so this is her first application, her first presentation, but we went to introduce her first.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. So Emma Martin, uh, Planning Department, sorry, five-five-five South Tenth Street. Uh, this is a request for a change of zone, um, sorry. Um, this is a request for a change of zone, uh, um, over one parcel located south of Conerhuska Highway and east of North Fourteenth Street. It is fifteen fifty-five Yolanda Avenue. Um, the Planning Department also proposes to rezone one other adjacent parcel which contains H-three zoning and is surrounded on three sides by fifteen fifty-five Yolanda Avenue. Um, and this is... So these are the two parcels that, um, are requested to be rezoned. Um, the rezone, uh, the request for rezone is from, is to rezone from H-three Highway Commercial zoning, uh, to rezone the property to I-one Industrial District, um, over approximately six point four-eight acres. Um, the zoning prior, oh, sorry, uh, the change of zone is requested by an applicant for, uh, fifteen fifty-five Yolanda Avenue, which is the site of the former Champions Fund Center in order to establish a boxing club facility and potentially future boxing matches and concerts. Um, and previously, the area was, uh, split zoned between I-one and H-three. And in, uh, February of two thousand and twenty-two, um, the property was rezoned to H-three Highway Commercial zoning, and this seeks to rezone two of those properties back to I-one for the purpose of the boxing club. And we recommend approval.
Questions for staff at this time? Nope. Okay.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, applicants? If you can just list your address, that'd be great.
Where we live currently?
Uh, yes.
Six-one-one-one Rolling Hills Boulevard.
Okay.
Lincoln, Nebraska, six-eight-five-one-two.
Great, thank you.
So, I have the same thing that she put up, that's all I have on me, so do you have any questions of me at all, or?
So, so we just rezoned this, like, six months ago or so.
Right.
Um, and were you the owner of the property at the time that it was rezone, when it was originally rezoned? Can you give us a little bit of that history?
So Jack is the owner, Jack Irons is the owner currently, and he, um, was gonna do, I think, like, a, uh, daycare, something, uh, basketball-type thing on the property, and so that's why he was requesting to change the zone. But he wants to sell, and so we're gonna purchase, and so we have to get it back to this other zone, if you will, to do the purposes of the boxing.
Okay, got it. That makes sense to me. Other questions for the applicant?
So it's the, the current owner that was gonna do the after-school program there, and that is no longer-
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
He's selling it to us, so.
Great. Any other questions for the applicant right now? Great, thank you so much.
That was easy, thank you.
Is there any testimony in support of this application? Any testimony in support? Any testimony, neutral testimony or testimony in opposition? Okay, any other questions for staff? All right, um, I'm assuming applicant, you're, you're feeling comfortable with where we're at and you don't need to come back up at this time.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I walked away, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, sounds good, no problem.
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second. Joy.
Shelley?
Campbell?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
I would move that we approve the change of zone two-two-zero-two-two.
Second. Corr?
Discussion.
Uh, it's just a very logical, um, they have to get it back to I to do the boxing and potential concerts in that facility. And I find that a good use for, um, that building at that location, so I'll be supporting this.
Anyone else? Yeah, I mean, it makes sense in, in terms of the change in use, um, that's proposed for the, um, for the property. You know, it's, um, H-three or I-one makes sense, given what the prevailing zoning is around this property, um, and changing it back so that a prospective buyer can, can go forward and, and use the property as they, um, would like to use, um, makes sense, and I will certainly vote in, in support. Shelley?
Campbell?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Okay, we will now move to continue public hearing for five point one A, Change of Zone two-two-zero-two-one from AGR Agricultural Residential District, District to R-three Residential District on property generally located at Linwood Lane and Avon Lane, and associated with item five point one B, Special Permit two-two-zero-two-four for the Sunrise Valley CUP Community Unit Plan with up to twenty-six dwelling units with associated waivers on property generally located at Linwood Lane and Avon Lane, and this is final action on that item. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on these applications?
No.
Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of these sites to be disclosed?
No. George?
Thank you, George Wesselhoff, Planning Department, five-five-five South Tenth Street. Uh, our location here is, uh, Linwood Lane near Avon Lane. This is Waterford Estates on the south and east sides of the parcel in question. Uh, the first application is a change of zone from AGR Agricultural Residential to R-three Residential over the eleven point one-nine acre parcel. And this proposal matches the, the general zoning in the area to the east and south. Waterford Estates is zoned R-three, um, so it's consistent with that, uh, zoning designation. And the, the change of zone is proposed to permit the related special permit. And so the special permit, uh, proposal is to permit a community unit plan with twenty-four dwelling units on the eleven point one-nine acres. Um, this would include residential units that would be single-family attached, um, so the development area initially would be on the south side. You'd have the twenty-four units, this is Linwood Lane, or, um, yes, Linwood, and then there'd be a, an outlot for the drainage area, and then another outlot that would be for future development, which the applicant has indicated, uh, at this time, is forecast for two dwelling units. And so this property is part of the Sunrise Villas Community Unit Plan, or, excuse me, the Sunrise Estates Community Unit Plan, which was originally approved in nineteen eighty-nine and included twenty-eight single-family lots. As a condition of approval, there would be an administrative amendment required to remove the new CUP from the existing Sunrise Estate CUP. Um, and I would note that the Sunrise Estate CUP was the first built-through acreage subdivision. It was specifically designed to be converted to urban residential densities. Um, one of the conditions of approval is to extend the, um, Outlot A, which is associated with the, the drainage area, so that the entire minimum flood corridor and wetlands are in the outlot. Uh, this is a stormwater best management practice for these areas to not be in future development outlot, but in their own outlot for flood corridor and wetlands. So that is a condition of approval, that that be extended all the way to, um, to encompass all the floodway and, and wetland areas. Also, as a condition of approval, it is, um, noted to extend Linwood Lane, um, along that extension of Outlot A. Uh, this means it will cross the, the drainage way associated with the floodway, um, and any improvements associated with that extension. And I would mention that staff had, um, more than one pre-application meeting with prospective, um, developers, and, and we consistently pointed out the need to look at that, um, drainage crossing. Obviously, there could be a potential expense there if there were improvements needed to that location. That is all I have. We do have representatives here from, uh, L T U Engineering Services and L T U Watershed if there's detailed stormwater or infrastructure questions.
Questions for George. Dick?
George, um, e- even though you're showing twenty-four units there, they were asking for up to twenty-six?
No, uh, that's a good question. Uh, they're only asking for the twenty-four, that was their initial request. Um, as a condition of approval, we're, um, indicating that for the two additional units to go up to the twenty-six.
Got it, thank you.
Other questions? Can you, can you tell me a little bit about what's, um, what Linwood Lane looks like right now?
Yeah, so it, it's not a, um, it's not built to full city standards with curb and gutter. Uh, there is some paving there. I might defer to the, the engineers in the room to, to get more specific.
Okay, great. Any other questions for George right now? Thank you.
Thank you.
Testimony from the applicant?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Tom Beckius, T-O-M-B-E-C-K-I-U-S, and my address is six-three-three-three Apples Way, Suite one fifteen. And I'm here today representing myself and my, uh, business partner, Bill Langton, as the potential developers of this parcel. Uh, thank you to George, um, for his introduction there. I apologize that we requested our original, uh, delay. We had scheduled an open house for the neighborhood and submitted the application, and the city, uh, was so speedy that, uh, the application went on the agenda before we could hold our open house for the neighborhood. So, thank you for that request of the delay. Um, one item that we wanted to talk about here today was the improvements of Linwood Drive, um, and, uh, we would actually ask, uh, for your consideration this afternoon for an amendment-
Thank you.
-to the conditions of approval, um, when it comes to paving Linwood Lane, uh, as staff has proposed, we are actually asking you to consider today that, uh, Linwood Lane only be paved to the south end of the flood corridor, um, as shown on the second page there of that attachment. Uh, as staff stated, Linwood Lane is a city street, um, but it's currently not up to city standards. Commissioner Ederton had asked about the status of Linwood Lane today. That's what Linwood Lane looks like today.
And that's, um, that would be looking north?
Uh, that is actually looking-
Looking south.
-south.
Okay, thank you.
Um, like I said, Linwood Lane is a city street, but it currently does not meet city standards. Um, as the staff, uh, report notes, uh, uh, city staff has requested that Linwood Lane be improved to city standards, and that's been very, very clear from city staff from the get-go, uh, not only with, with us when it came to pre-application meetings, but also other potential developers of this piece of ground as well. So, that has been clear from the get-go. Um, and a lot of other developers looked at this particular piece of ground to be developed, and a lot of them turned away because of the additional expense of developing this piece of ground, especially when it came to crossing the culvert at Linwood Lane. Um, we are, um, proposing, um, that we just stop short of the culvert simply due to cost. Uh, we are more than happy to make improvements to Linwood Lane from Waterford Estates proceeding north to the culvert, um, and get that portion of the street up to city standards, uh, curb, gutter, sidewalks, what have you. Um, but the development unfortunately does not allow, um, for us to financially support the improvement of the road beyond that point in time. In short, the estimates that we have currently, uh, would, uh, give us the, the number of, um, adding the culvert improvements, uh, would add about fifty-eight hundred dollars per lot, um, to the town home development of twenty-four units that we're looking at today. Just as, um, a little bit of an example, here's a development that, uh, was recently approved in April of this year by the city of Lincoln. It's at eighty-eight, Eighty-eighth and Pioneers, and this development here, um, is doing a small cul-de-sac of, I believe, single-family residential, but the developer also owns, uh, subsequent parcels to the north there, too. The question at that point in time was, how much should the developer contribute to the paving of Eighty-eighth Street? This is what Eighty-eighth Street looks like at that location. At that point in time, in April, city, city staff suggested that it would be a hardship for the development to bear the cost of the improvement of the road. The, this development here on Eighty-eighth Street does not have any other party participating in it. The neighbors across the street would not be participating in any of the improvements of the road, very much the same circumstance in which we find ourselves over at Linwood So we are asking you today to please consider the amendment, um, that would limit the build-out of Linwood Lane at this development. We know that we're taking a risk by coming and asking this of you today. Um, it was something that, um, has been at the forefront of this development since the day Sunrise Estate said, "We want to try to make a go of something here." And most other developers have walked away from this project because of the cost and the cost of dealing with that culvert, although it's a city road and Sunrise Estates pays city taxes. Um, so we're looking at the improvement of a, of an existing city road. Uh, we don't consider this to be a perfect solution by any means, um, but we do feel like with the addition of the improvement of Linwood Lane that we are contributing to, that we do feel like this is a compromise that makes sense. We feel like this is a workable solution to add more housing in the area, to have a housing product in the area that fits well with both Waterford Estates, which is single-family detached residential, primarily at that location, and also three-to-five acreage lots, uh, that comprise of Sunrise Estates. We feel like the, the town homes that we're suggesting at this location are about as dense of a product that makes sense when we're talking about true infill, that does not abut an arterial street. So we think that this is a workable solution, albeit a, uh, not a perfect solution. The alternative here is that potentially nothing gets built here, um, that we're not adding any new housing, we're not adding anything to the tax base, um, and ultimately, these are city roads that, once they get repaired, would be on the city's dime anyway. We feel like we are offering something and bringing something to the table by making improvements where we can, where it's financially feasible for this development to take on, since we're only twenty-four units, to take on as much of the improvements as we can financially. We think this offers a better solution than nothing, um, and that's what we're here today to ask, to see if you agree. So, um, here are a few pictures of the town homes that are being proposed. I know a few folks from the public hearing two weeks ago had asked questions about the town homes as being proposed. Here are just some visuals. These town homes actually exist in the Lincoln market today, so we're not creating anything new. Um, but these are the, this is the product that would eventually be built on the lots that are proposed over at Linwood Lane. Um, with that, I'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
Dick?
Uh, Tom?
Yes, sir.
Is it your anticipation then that when the area north and west, uh, of you gets developed, that that would be the time for everybody to participate in crossing the drainage area?
Correct. I mean, as staff mentioned, this is a, uh, a, a build-through acreage development. Um, the parcels up, the parcels to the north that, that we had talked about that are being reserved for potential development, they don't make economic sense to develop right now anyway. Otherwise, we would be proposing that we- Otherwise, we would be proposing that we develop those. I think it actually makes sense for that to occur when the rest of the build-through acreage occurs as well. I don't know when that'll be, but there's going to be substantial infrastructure costs when that occurs. The other thing I'll say is, remember, this is a city street. The city annexed this subdivision, knowing the condition of the street, the culvert, what have you. We would like to think that the partner would be, the city would be a partner as well in terms of maintaining those roads, improving those roads as they need be in the future.
And through impact fees?
Impact fees are being paid, yes, sir.
No, I mean, is that the revenue that you think could be used for the culvert?
No, no, this is a local street. It's not impact fee reimbursable.
Right.
Tom, do you own the area to the north? Like, is that, you know, that little
Yes, ma'am. It's all part of the same parcel being sold by Sunrise Estates. And then there's also an outlot across the street from Linwood, a tiny piece that's also part of the package, but is open green space and will continue to be so.
And that picture that you showed us of Linwood Lane, I think it was?
Yes, ma'am.
And the cross street, is that Northern Sky Road?
That is Avon.
Okay. So, this is kind of around the bend there?
Yes. The parcel to the left, Commissioner Corr, is the parcel that you just referenced in your previous question.
This is probably a question for city staff, but because I know this, we've had other things before us with this development because of the apartments that came in. When the apartments went in, so that would be Dwayne Lane, and then also with Eastview Road, were either of those improved to meet city standards at the time that they connected with those other developments, or are they similar to Linwood Lane? And I'm just curious, again, it's probably a better question.
We'll have staff answer that, but I do not believe that either one of those were improved, as they did not necessarily abut the existing development. The subdivision ordinance specifically states if you're abutting roads, that the city may request, or shall request, upgrades to those roads if needed. And so, but as we've seen in other circumstances, those requests are not made, and so we're trying to do our best to meet the subdivision ordinance while keeping this financially sustainable. But no, I don't believe that that developer was required to make those improvements.
Tom, there was a conversation with George earlier. He mentioned extension of the outlot. What is your position with regard to staff's recommendation on the outlot?
We're fine. We think that makes sense to put the minimum flood corridor in its own outlot. There's no problem there.
And then we also, when the hearing was delayed, we had some conversation with other folks who wanted to testify at that time, and there was some question about trees on the property?
Sure.
Yeah, can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. So, and this was a topic of conversation certainly in our neighborhood meetings as well, and we have some interested Waterford neighbors here today who attended our neighborhood meeting as well that testified previously. Let me see if I can pull up my map here. Commissioner Edgerton, the trees primarily in question, as I understand the question to be from the neighborhood, are primarily the trees along this line here. There is a row of existing trees that are on the parcel that we're looking to develop today, and they're pretty substantial in size. The issue that I have is that is also the area of a utility easement, a 10-foot utility easement, and my best guess is that my utility companies are going to come along and say, "We would like those trees removed." We will do our best to grade around them, and we will do our best to make sure that the utility companies have a workable area to work in, but I can't guarantee that those trees will remain. Although, it's always in our interest to try to make those trees remain, because frankly, people like them, and it's easier to sell lots when you have trees. So, it's in our interest, too, but I can't make a guarantee at this point that those trees will remain. The trees here along the flood corridor, of course, will remain.
Excellent. Thanks for the clarity.
Yep.
Dick?
Tom, with your stopping Linwood Lane before the culvert area, would you not have to put a T in there for turnarounds?
Well, Linwood Lane would still proceed on, Dick. It's still the asphalt, or the road exists today. We're just going to bring it up to a city standard with curb and gutter. So, it would just continue on as it stands today, which is the unimproved version of what we have.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Okay.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Testimony in support of this application? Is there any testimony in support? I believe we have some neutral testimony.
I do have a question. In the previous meeting, I spoke in support at that point in time, so that is carried forward to this meeting as well.
That carries forward. That's correct. Thank you. I think our neutral testimony is via Zoom, and if you can hear me, please go ahead and state your name and address for the record. Hello?
Hello. John Wilsey, 630 Linwood Lane. The second photograph that Mr. Beckius showed appeared to me to be looking east while traveling No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Is there any other neutral testimony at this time? Testimony in opposition? No testimony in opposition? Do we have additional staff questions?
Yes.
Okay. George?
George, how are you feeling about this amendment?
Staff just learned about this amendment here. We did not see it beforehand, so I think we've been clear, as staff noted and the applicant noted, about the requirement, and as far as future improvement to that crossing, some other development outside of this boundary would not be required to do that, and the only other dwelling units that would remain would be those two dwelling units north of the drainage area. So, if it's not done as part of this, then it's not likely to be done as far as some other development.
I was trying to find, I can remember when we annexed this, but I can't remember what year that was.
It may be in the history. It may actually precede the 1989 timeframe for the Sunrise Estates' change of zone and special permit, it looks like.
Just annexed
Yeah, it had to have been within the last five years.
Oh, I apologize. Yeah, yes, I'm trying to recollect here. Yeah, I don't have that information. I'm sorry.
So, really, it's just been a city street since it's been annexed?
Yes. It's a city street now.
So, if it hadn't have been annexed before this, this probably wouldn't be a situation right now. Would it have been okay to just have it as is right now, or would you still require the upgrade?
So, in simple terms, the street that exists today predates the current city standards. If this were proposed under the city standards and the city limits today, they would have to do full curb and gutter, et cetera.
But if it was just in the county, not the city limits, would they have to do it?
No, not city standards.
Stephen Erstens of the Planning Department, maybe I can help clarify some things. So, this is in the city's three-mile zoning jurisdiction, and this is a build-through acreage subdivision, as it was originally approved. So, even if something had come forward, you wouldn't be approving urban zoning outside of the city limits. So, first off, if you came forward with an R2 or R4, whatever, you wouldn't have that outside of the city limits, or you'd be requiring it to be annexed. In this case, it's already been annexed, so the improvement would have been required, even if it was outside of the city limits, because either it's being annexed, or you wouldn't have had the urban zoning to it. I can try to help answer some of the questions that were brought up. In terms of the adjacent development, Mr. Beckius was correct. Dwayne Lane within the Sunrise Estates' subdivision didn't have any additional improvements to it. Certainly, there may be some traffic from the 8801 of people who are going to visit other people who will drive back through the neighborhood, and now people in Sunrise Estates will use Dwayne Lane, but generally, a minimal amount of development, and at this point, these lots are not requesting to develop. And I kind of want to, just to look to the bigger picture for a moment, this is an acreage build-through subdivision, and so we have been contacted over time by other owners in this area who would probably like to develop. Some of them have only been talking about doing, for instance, on some of these big lots, most of them have building envelopes for an additional two lots, so you might go from one to three, and so you would have to look at the traffic generation of that. And that was certainly an issue at the 88 and Pioneers that was mentioned. You only had eight lots, and it was on a dead-end street, so the amount of trips added by eight lots to a dead-end street that had maybe another 10-acreage residence beyond it was less than by adding 24, ultimately 26 lots, in an urban subdivision on this location. And the same would go for Eastview. Mr. Beckius was correct. Eastview was not required to be improved, even though the adjacent neighborhood urbanized, because that development wasn't immediately adjacent to it. And to address the question that came from Dick, here is the area of the application. So, if anybody came in, let's say, to subdivide this property to the northwest and was going to do two lots, or let's even say they were going to do more, they were going to do 10, we would not be able to require them to do an improvement down Linwood Lane, not immediately adjacent to their development. So, if this cost is
Second, they're not, if we look on that screen, we can see what you're looking at. Otherwise, we're still seeing you on the screen, so just wanted to let you know we weren't able to see them.
If we could pass over
So, you may need to go back over there.
Have it on both.
Thank you.
Right, it's kind of nice to have the big screen over there. So, if we could go to the laptop, that would be helpful. There we go. So, this is the area of the application, and the improvement is for this drainage way right in here, where there's a culvert underneath the street. And the request is either, do you stop the pavement here, or do you continue it through the outlot, which will not be developed, which is the requirement? This is all going to be in an outlot that'll never be developed, it's for a drainage way, so you're required to continue the urban improvement through that outlot. So, if the improvement stops south of the culvert versus going north of it to the edge of the outlot, I'm just noting that since they are purchasing both this and the narrow outlot to the west, that if anybody came in to develop other parcels to the north or to the west, you wouldn't be able to require them to improve both the street and the culvert. And what we were noting is there's a potential probably for another two lots here. The rest of this is really probably just drainage way that can't be developed. It wouldn't be possible to have two lots pay for the cost of the culvert either, and so the culvert, if it's not as a part of this improvement, would have to be done by the city instead.
So, the comparison with regard to the examples that were provided by the applicant, I mean, it's really the facts and circumstances, the fact that there were less units. It's all about the traffic that would have been developed in those areas, considering what might potentially be at play here with 24 units.
Correct, because you would anticipate that people who are living in the townhomes in this development will be heading north over the culvert, over the drainage way, north to Holdridge Street, and are going back and forth, as well as they might also head south. Because of the south, you could also easily get over to 98th Street. So, you'll probably have some traffic heading south, some going north, and because it's an urban-type development, that's more than eight or 10 lots, the requirement was to go ahead and make that improvement at least up through the culvert into the edge of the outlot, which is the outlot for open space, which is the requirement.
Steve, it seems that there is a heavier burden being placed on this small development of 24 lots on that culvert, which presently serves all those acreages up above also. With that being said, that this was developed as a build-through acreage development, could there not be some contribution from the city towards them doing it to offset what will happen in the future with the build-through?
Well, a city contribution, that would fall to Lincoln Transportation Utilities, so I'll have Bob Simmering come up and answer that question, since we'd be spending his money.
The checkbook. Ching.
Thank you. Bob Simmering, Lincoln Transportation Utilities. The mechanism we have for improving residential streets are assessment districts, so the cost does go back to the landowners. We have Lincoln on the move, but that's used for arterials. Impact fees are for arterials. In the local street system, if those improvements are made other than maintenance, or a plan that the city has in their long-range plans, those are costs that are passed on to the residential users.
Then, with the other developments, I think, further east, that were not required to change and upgrade the streets to curb and gutter, could this not apply in this situation?
I'm not sure I understand the question. The lots that are not yet developed, if they develop?
No, the previous approvals that were given to allow those roads to stay as they were, not up to city standards, could that not apply to this and leave the present culvert in Linwood Lane as it is?
I think that's, I mean, it could happen, but I think that's not something that I think city staff would support at all, because there is typically the investment that the developer makes on bringing these streets up to modern standards, and that's basically a common situation.
But we did allow the others two to stay, correct?
I don't know what are the ones you're talking about.
The examples that were provided by the applicant.
The one example on Pioneers, I think, was eight lots on a dead-end street. So, there is, as far as users, there won't be pass-through users. You have eight lots, or technically seven additional lots versus 24, 26 here, so the impact is measurably different.
So, his proposal, then, to go ahead and bring it up to city standards, up to the start of the drainage swale, and to do it within the development, what would be wrong with leaving Linwood Lane as it is, as it progresses into the acreages?
Well, I think it's a matter of balance. You have 24 lots to balance against this. You have 24 lots to balance against this now. If you stop at that point, you have two lots to balance it, including improvements on the other part of Linwood. So it's not economically feasible to build that culvert for two lots, or pave that part of the street.
Uh, but what I'm saying is, the amount of, of, uh, of additional traffic on Linwood really would stop at these 24 lots. You're not gonna get a whole lot of additional traffic beyond that.
I think these lots will generate traffic, the, the, there isn't any other change pending in that subdivision that we know of.
But if it was brought up to city standards, up and into that development, um, that would seem to satisfy the increased, uh, increased traffic, and, and yet not, um, impact the acreages further in any way.
I don't think the distance he goes in is a big difference to the people that live in Sunrise. I think the difference is who pays for the cost of that section of pavement and that drainage structure. And we don't have any details on what improvements they're talking about at those values. Uh, I don't think paving itself would be, uh, $140,000, and I don't know what they've looked at on the culvert. We haven't seen drainage calculations on that. We don't know, uh, possibly that culvert could be used as is, or with minor improvements. So, um, we don't have enough details to make a specific statement that it's perfectly logical to do this, or know that cost is, you know, out of, out of line.
Well, and, and my assumption is that the culvert would have to be extended to get the curb and gutter and sidewalks.
I think there, that's very highly probable.
And it may have to be increased in size.
That we don't know.
Yeah. Right. It may be a question for Tim Gergen.
It may be.
Additional questions for staff at this time? Thank you both.
Thank you.
Applicant rebuttal.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Edgerton. Um, the reason that I brought up the 88th and Pioneers example is because, to a certain degree, we're talking semantics. So this is the lot that is currently, uh, was approved in April to be developed into the eight lots in the cul-de-sac that we talked about. Here's 88th Street that was not required to be improved whatsoever with the development of those eight lots. You'll notice the ownership of this lots is David and Doreen Miller, who also own that lot, who also own that lot, who also own that lot. And here is the extension from Firethorn coming down the road. So my guess is that they're developing lot by lot, a series of homes that are not gonna be requiring the improvement of 88th Street, which also is going to be the only connection for the entire Firethorn neighborhood out onto Piner's Boulevard from 84th to 98th. That's why I brought up this particular example. Now, I think that one could argue, if one wanted to, although I'm not sure it's, um, very appropriate to do so, that this outlot here, I could not buy. And then perhaps I could make the argument, well, I don't own the outlot across the street, even though it's really best used for open green space, but I could argue in theory, maybe it could be development ground in the future, and I shouldn't have to share in the cost of the road improvement, because the guy across the street may eventually develop too. Those are all arguments that we could be making here. Um, but for note, that's why I brought up the 88th and Pioneers Street example, because I think it is particularly relevant. We're talking about the eventual development of potentially more units than the 24 that were proposed here, without the city requiring any improvement to that ground. Even though it's being developed lot by lot, the totality of the impact by the development is probably greater than what we're looking at here. Um, as far as the other, um, item I wanted to note before additional questions, um, we actually think that this is a perfect potential project for stormwater bond improvement by the city, which is often done in existing neighborhoods where the improvements needed are more expensive than the, um, than the work that can be done or taken over by the homeowners, HOA, what have you. It's not an uncommon tool being used in our jurisdiction for those type of improvements. And once again, we know that this is not a perfect solution whatsoever. We're just trying to find a workable solution that gets more lots built, um, without overburdening, um, and making it impossible to actually, uh, do the development itself. So we'd be happy to take any questions. And I do have Tim Gergen here, who's here to answer any questions as well.
Yeah, I would like to ask a question, Tim.
Yeah.
Tim, in your preliminary look, what do you have to do for that, uh, drainage crossing?
So the existing culvert's about 40 feet long in length. Uh, we looked at it hydraulically. Uh, it can pass the flow through it, so hydraulically, it's appropriately sized. Um, it's just the length is not as long, uh, through there, so, um, we would have troubles of getting a standard city street through there and having sidewalks on both sides to, to, uh, do that without having to do, undo extrences of lengthening the culvert, tearing out the head walls and building new head walls and lengthening it.
What, uh, what length would you have to add on both ends?
Uh, it'd be about 10 feet on either side.
Right, and then the greater cost would be the aprons, correct?
The, the head walls, yes.
Head walls.
Yep.
And, you know, if it would be, I, I don't know that it gets to the point of what we're trying to achieve here as a community in terms of that culvert, but we could, you know, simply just pave over it. Um, you know, it's not wide enough to do much else with, but we could pave over it if that's of help too. I mean, that doesn't cost that much more. It's the culvert that's the issue.
Gloria?
So you stated 58,000 per lot?
Fifty-eight hundred, sorry.
Eight hundred?
Yep.
That's where my number was off, I had an extra zero.
No, sorry, 5800 per lot is our estimated additional cost, um, for the potential, uh, work that needs to be done on that culvert.
So you're looking at about $150,000.
A little bit less than that, Commissioner Campbell, about 128, somewhere in there?
My math says 140.
I'll take Gloria's math more than mine. Yeah, yeah.
Other questions for the applicant?
And like I said, the, the, the street, the streets exist today. It's not a perfect solution that the streets are in right now either. Um, no sidewalks to be had, uh, no curb, no gutter. It's, it's not a perfect situation now. We're happy to do what we can to make the situation better from the culvert, uh, south to Waterford Estates, because that's what we can economically sustain with this development. Uh, but we can't do more than that, and if we can't do more than that, then what'll happen is that it'll just remain. And, um, I don't know that that's the, a great solution, uh, for what we're looking at here today. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I would move to close the public hearing.
Oh, oh, let's, let's wait on that for a second.
Tim's coming.
Yeah, Tim's the Assistant City Attorney. I hate to do this to you, but, um, what I'm hearing is that there is a new waiver in front of this board, and that would ordinarily require notice to the public that there is a request for such a waiver and an opportunity to, for them to comment on that waiver. So I would caution you against closing the public hearing. It would be my suggestion that the, that the board defer action on this matter and hold the public hearing open until the next planning commission item, so that it can be advertised as a, as a waiver. And I, I apologize for, for surprising the, the developer on that, but I had not been, was not aware this was a, an issue at all until...
They've, they've worded it as a request for an amendment.
Well...
But, but you're saying that it's really a waiver of a, of a...
It's a waiver of the subdivision ordinance requirements. I mean, if that, if we take that to, to the next step, we would never get requests for waivers. We would just get motions to amend at the public hearing that don't. And, and I'm not suggesting that's what was done here. I'm not suggesting there was anything intentional about this, but just to protect the process and to make sure we don't find ourselves, um, trying to, okay, handing this over to someone to challenge, I think we'd be better off if we waited two weeks to take action on it and held the public hearing open, specifically to, to take testimony on the waiver request. And maybe it's a, a really short hearing, and for that, I apologize for, for waiting for two, two weeks, but I think it's, I think it's incumbent upon me to at least advise the board of that.
Okay, then I would move to keep the public hearing open and defer this to our next meeting in two weeks.
Wait, wait, hold on.
Uh, Steve Hendrickson, so, um, I'm gonna ask a question of Shelley. Um, is it possible for us, because the legal ad has already gone out, is it possible for us to amend it?
It's gone out.
Yeah, I, I didn't think so. We, we need to, we would need to delay it four weeks, um, because we have the advertising. Now, I do think this is appropriate...
Hasn't gone out.
Oh, it hasn't gone out?
No.
Okay, so we might have a chance to amend it then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, then we could, two each of you, fine then. Sorry, I misunderstood.
I was waiting till the end, I was waiting till the end of the day.
I also think it's appropriate that there be an opportunity for the applicant to speak if they want to have it waived to, delayed two weeks or not.
Applicant, will you come back up, please? I was reading your body language back there, but if you'd like to respond...
The applicant apologizes for the snafu in procedure. We are more than happy to, uh, to delay as necessary.
Thank you.
So we only have to wait two weeks?
Yep.
Right.
So I think I can second his motion, because it was still on the table, correct?
Correct.
It would be Edens.
It's to hold over the public hearing, um, and to, for another two-week period of time. Okay. So we have a motion and a second? Any other discussion?
I also think this is a good opportunity for staff to look at that culvert a little more, um, and give some recommendations on what they think might work.
Yeah, with the, with the size already being appropriate, um, there may be some simpler solutions that they could come up with.
Shelley, will you call the vote, please?
Campbell?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Motion to delay, delay public hearing until August 24th, seven to zero.
At this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so?
I have a question, um...
We'd have to delay 5.1B too.
There's two, two things here, so do we need to delay both of them?
Okay.
Because we have the change of zone and the special permit.
Right. So I would move that we keep the public hearing open on special permit 22024 until our meeting in two weeks.
Second? Or do you want a second?
Have we, I'm turning my number...
We haven't, we haven't voted on either of them.
Well, we just voted to delay them.
You voted to delay the special permit, correct?
Mm-hmm.
That's what you have, Shelley?
That's what I had, but then we also had that change of zone, so are we going to do a motion on...
Um, I think it's perfectly appropriate to hold that over and take them both up at the same time. I also don't think it's absolutely necessary, so it's really within the...
Okay.
... prerogative of the board.
So, so both of them were covered.
Okay, so I will make a...
There will be two separate votes on this, one way or another.
I will make a motion that we delay the hearing on change of zone 22021 for two weeks.
And special permit 22024.
Okay.
Second.
You good? Okay, Campbell?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Is there anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda? I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved, Campbell.
Second, Joy. Shelley?
Campbell?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Meaning adjourned.
Thank you.